At this time, we will begin our work study session for the Adrian City Commission for December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Mr. Health.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Mr. Castleberry.
President.
Mr. Gougs.
President.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Eric. So before we get to digital banner policy, or maybe we want to get digital panel policy, I have another matter that's come up that I wanted to discuss with you in the time. Might for that, if you don't mind. For a little while now, we've been working with Mammoth Distilling. They're interested in locating the facility here to actually do distilling, or. In a lecture with a sort of like a tasting room. Jay is here too, and he's been involved in those meetings and shown them various sites. Around town. Originally, I think we had a little bit of a different idea of what they were looking for. I thought they kind of wanted to be downtown with this. Facility, but it turns out it's very much an industrial operation. There are four big trucks a day coming and going from the facility. We focus more on industrial sites. And we are not the only ones carting them as it relates to this facility. We're constructing with Chelsea. And Comsey, who's made proposals to them, or had discussions with them as well. But we pitched to them, amongst the places we pitched to them was our lot that we still have remaining in our former, what I'll call a former industrial park, because it's not really. Much of an industrial park anymore. You'll recall that we sold the majority of the big land to Ken McLaren's. After the some time ago, both for the hotel and then residential properties. In our Westwood Hotel, multi-pay, he is working on that, so we've kind of meeting with him fairly recently, actually. We have one lot remaining, and that's the satellite view that I passed out the place in series. In my low-tech manner, I highlighted the, was my yellow highlighter, the one, one lot that we still have. It's a. Little over five acres. I don't have any exact, but it's right there at the end of the lot, Enterprise Drive. So they are interested in that site. However, as it's been told to us. The company has offered them a free lot. I would, what I, my ask of you tonight is that. You give me your opinion on whether or not I should negotiate, try to negotiate something similar. I would tell you that my view of industrial park lots is that you create them. For the taxable value that will be added on when you dispose of them and somebody builds on them. And so, you know, whatever the sale price of the lot, it is kind of irrelevant in the economic development equation. And then the most true part, as evidenced by lots of theirs, I think they'd be given away. That's on the final as well. So that twenty thousand dollars or, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things doesn't mean much to the taxable value that we're going to create that we'll keep giving back. Time, of course, the other economic effects, jobs. So on, this particular location has a nice synergy also with the college, which I think is of interest to them. There's some discussion of having a college program related to. Distilling as well. So that's, that's the idea. You know, want to hear your thoughts and whether there's support for doing something like that. And if there is, then what I would propose to do is go. And negotiate with them during something back to hopefully for your first meeting in January, but whenever it's ready. Site that facility. I think they're strongly motivated to have a facility in town.
I guess my feeling is that in the seven years that I've been here, I've seen Adrian lose out several times to businesses. That want to do something similar. We've lost out other cities. I don't want to see us lose out this time. So I, and I agree with what you're saying. I would. Like to see you negotiate with them.
I should add that obviously if we're going to. Convey something predominantly value, then it's going to be on the condition that. Development curve was a reasonable period of time, or else it would revert back to that.
Yeah, and that was my only, only question was to make sure that we give it to them. Because I'm fully supportive of it. I think that anytime you have competition with attracting. You know, companies, especially, you know, Mammoth having some roots here in Adrian, I think that just to make sure there's some kind of development agreement, you know. On the books, you know, you know, the signage, because I'm totally with Commissioner Strayer. I think that. Again, we've lost a lot to competition communities around us and, and to be aggressive with that and, and to have Mammoth have their hub here, you know, with the, obviously with the downtown location, I think that, that's just fitting. So. I'm a hundred percent supportive of you. Negotiating that deal, so.
I would also agree. I mean, the land's just sitting there. We're not. Making any money on it right now anyways. So, you know, even if we're, you know, it's very nominal fee, we're just. Yet, let's start getting the taxable value on there in the near future, as long as there's a plan for development. I think. I definitely agree, because how long have we had it? It's just been sitting there.
Right.
A long time.
I'd like, I'd like to see it on the patchwork as well. So I'm supportive of this one.
Great idea.
So I guess I'll be, not necessarily naysayer, but I have a few more questions. So this plant would butt up against a quite large residential area, correct?
It's a.
It's the mobile home, right? Are there any issues? Are we going to run into? Order issues?
I don't think it could possibly be as bad as what's right in Evergreen, which is evergreen grease. And they are, by the way, the only other. Entity that's approached us about buying that parcel on the decline for them, because they are kind of. Noxious operation, sadly.
So you don't perceive any concerns with the residents back there? What does that mean to them?
You know, I mean, I've never heard a peep from anybody out of there. They obviously know that they live next to industrial land. It wraps all the way around. Them and across the street, or of course, across the street. Never heard any complaints provided out there.
That's my first concern. Second concern is. And fully in favor of developing land, but we sold other parcels. Is there any issues with us? Selling one person parcels of land out there and then giving away other people.
Well, what I would say about that is, you know, it, it, when we sold those other properties, we sold them without condition. This would not be that. In this case, it would be developed for die. You've got so much time to build. Or it reverts back to the city. You know, every property deal with the bundle of. Bundle of sticks you hear about, right? And so, you know, in those cases, you've got all the sticks. In this case, in the case, you wouldn't get all the sticks and did something. Do that. So I view them as a very distinct source of transactions. You know, likewise, the other deals that we've done recently out there, the clearing deal, or. Of course, the attractive growth deal down the street, we sold large tracts of, this is a small. Track that is in fact lost. Much of its utility because of what we get. Booked everything north of that upright drive and turned it into something other than that.
Greg, to Mary's point. Would, whatever has to go through the planning commission, everything else, that require notice to the people in the, in the. Trailer park or mobile home park?
Not necessarily.
Okay, that would announce it anyways, isn't it? Is that the city?
Yes.
It is in the city?
Yes. No, I mean, the lands are already zoned. It's.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any, okay.
There would be a site plan.
Right. But that would fall. Right.
Mayor may not have visited St. Lurie when I was in Ireland.
Right.
What do you think, Eric?
And I don't care for the smell of beer. So if, if a place came in right in my backyard that smelled like. Beer, or someone didn't like the smell of whiskey or something, and I would have been living there for, you know, in my house for thirty years, I would not be part.
I always like to tell the story of near-north side of Chicago. There, it's kind of a little bit off the beaten path, but there's a chocolate factory there, rumors, something like that. And when you get over in that part of the city, everything smells like chocolate. If you like chocolate, it's like hell, right? But if you happen to be the person that hated chocolate, that'd be an awful place to live. Yeah, every smell is particular to people, but industry in general smells. Move to a place, you know. It's incumbent upon you to know what is around you. This is all good, I feel for a lot. Like we're creating a new situation. It'd be a far different story if we were zoning this way.
Obscure as.
Too industrial to account.
I'm guessing the majority of those residents don't really understand zoning, or have a clue that that is how the way the world works.
Probably not, but if you were to look, you know, to the east. And saw evergreen grease there and saw an empty lot between you and evergreen grease. You'd have a pretty good idea of what might be going next.
I'm not opposed to it. I just want to be looking at all, what, what are, what are some things that people are going to come to us and complain about?
Well, like, yeah, like I said, I've never had any complaints. And we did, in fact, have public hearings regarding the Marvin farm and the result, which was a result. We resolved all of that. And they got, all those folks got noticed. No, I mean, the motor, they're waiting for this.
You're gonna, you're gonna go do the.
I'm gonna go do the best deal I can, and I'll hopefully, is there anything you wanted to add, Jay, regarding your discussion with them?
No, I mean, it's, Lenway County is ideal for them. So, little known fact, their, their waste product is spent grains. The biggest consumer of spent grains are dairy farms. Lenway County is the largest population of dairy farms in the state of Michigan. So it's important for them to be here for that proximity, because every morning they get a load of grain, they put it in silo. Process it throughout the day, and at the end of the night, a little truck actually comes in to take that and carry it away. So that's why they're, why. Other than they're all personalized by Lenway County, it's important to them. What little experience I have in understanding distilleries, it kind of smell like a baker. Because as the, as the grain gets spent, it's going to have that kind of bakery smell, not as intense as a brewery, but a light aroma, according, you know. Similar to that. So I wouldn't expect any nachos.
Okay, so that, that begs the follow-up question. In April, I happened to go to several Kentucky. Our distilleries, including Jim Beam, Buffalo Trace, and all that, and they have. Oh, the three, four, five story places, there's a particular name for those big barns that house. But again.
Racket, Ricket House, Rickets.
Something like that. But one of the things that, that is happening in Kentucky is that black. Mole, I'll call it, for, for lack of a better term, and that creeps into the grass and into the trees where the whole forest behind Jim Beam is black. It, it's not pretty. And I didn't know what it was from, but it's some.
I think it comes from actually being in those houses, though, as the, as the aging process happens.
Something leaches out and creates this black stuff that goes on all of the trees. There's a particular term for it. Is that something that could happen? Here in Adrian?
I, I don't know the process well enough to speak on it, you know, from an education and educated aspect. But I think that particular one is being in the big buildings and the aging process of the whiskey that does it. I don't know, I don't think there's had this to happen here, but I don't know.
Those are some questions that you can ask, Greg, as you're talking to them, and just come back and say some concerns have been expressed by commissioners. What can you tell us? And maybe when you bring back the, the deal, you can have some answers. That would be good.
If not, then I will move on to digital banner policy. I don't know if you all got to see it. It's in the front room here. Not between meetings, maybe you could take a peek. There's an example of one of our new digital banners set up on the. On conference room up there. So we're going to have now six of those. They will be at the gateways to downtown and then two at the four corners. So the initial discussion was, well, you know, more than anything, I just want to get you thinking about this idea, and then I'll pause it for the interim. But, you know, there's going to be a vast array of messaging. To rotate, to loop to it. So messages change over the course of the day as well. LED sign that you might see around. And, and there are, would be opportunities to. Utilize those, you know, for various groups and events and even advertising. My thought is that we can't go down that route until we have a policy out of it. It's kind of similar to the discussions we've had about free posters. Flags and all of that, that. If, if you open it up to some, you open it up to everybody unless you have a well-defined policy for what the founders of that. Situation are. So. My thought is that until we have such policy and it would naturally. Flow from what we're working on as it relates to its other activities. I, I would suggest that we use it only for government. The weather, you know, just government issued. Start thinking about what. Policy like that, that might look like. After the first of year, we're going to reengage on those topics. She wanted to start fresh next year, which is a good way to look at it. So we'll be bringing now those issues back and working on those, you know, that hard policy. Watch those things look like, but in the meantime, those will be going up. And I think we'll stick to just.
Are we on a light poles?
They are going on the light poles with the. With, yeah, there's one already up on these. Yeah, they go, Jay may know better than I where they actually are, but.
So there'll be all four access points into the city, and then two will be downtown four corners. They'll actually be on the, at the exit point for the double-headed pole. So the taller sixteen-foot poles, there'll be one at each entrance point coming in.
Then we had to, had to improvise a four corners, the poles that they were intended to be on. Are actually amidst some street trees that we saved there that were pretty good sized trees, so they would have been in branches. Unfortunately, the street signs that are at our corners sit where crosswalk signs used to be, so they're powered. We are going to have leftover poles, because surprise, surprise, Jay, see I shipped some of the wrong poles. They match, but they just have the electrical box in the wrong place. And so they're gonna, once they swap those poles out. Put two of those poles at the corner. They won't all straight by that. And that's what the. Digital banners are saying. So. Again, interested to hear your thoughts, or is there any just? Well, you'll see when you, if they look to the left, but they're about the side.
Eighteen by thirty-six, I think, is the display size.
Earlier this fall, though, I would like to make sure that we entertain celebrating all the. People in our community with those. I think this is a good chance to, although cautious. Obviously, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to celebrate all the things that are unique and special about Adrian. So I hope that we are able to put that into.
I should imagine John's on Zoom tonight, but he is up there, and I'm sure he's taking note of. That and will help us develop a tight policy where we can do that and yet. Avoid the pitfalls that sometimes come along with such things, one of which we all already been confronted with.
Free speech is a delicate balance. Have it for one. What I said last summer, we allowed one group was to say we. Who discriminated against the mother.
So you just want us to get a, start thinking about a hardened policy, so once they are, right now, using for just the city, you know, Michelle and, and Jay and the DDA and whatnot, and then. Once we get a first year, start thinking about a hard policy for going.
Right, and we're going to be bringing that back to the three meeting in general, moving forward on three of those parts.
And I know another thing, too, they had mentioned that the messaging will, won't be a lot. I can't read that much as you're going back, because they're not very big. I know that. You and I talked about that before, that it's not like we can put a lot on them anyways, because they're not that big and you're going to be driving by, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're good sized, but the font ends up being still pretty small, and because it's LED, it's not as crisp as that were painted on there, so. Yeah, you're, you are limited in that kind of message. All right, well, that was all I had about, was there something else on that? Matters, and we all come back to you for a comment.
All right, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. We will start inside the chambers first, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. You will hear, if your three minutes is up, you'll hear the alarm go off. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin in chambers right now.
Hi, Joshua French, Adrian City resident. With the talks of future discussions for policies, especially involving the use of those signs downtown and burning free speech, I would like to remind everyone in the room that. These speeches are not free.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants. You will also hear your, when your three minutes are up, and for the record, please state your name and address as well. Hearing none, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned, and we will begin our meeting out there at seven oh five. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Health.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gougs.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I'm going to call forward our fire chief, Eric Massengill, who's going to do some badge presentations.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, as has been customary in the past few years, we're going to do badge presentations for. Two of our firefighters who have finished their probationary period. It's a year-long, usually a year-long probation. Where we make sure that they're able to train and learn the streets and learn the city and. Make sure that they're, they're qualified and they can operate as firefighter paramedics. So tonight, first, we have Ben Fountain. You want to come up, Ben? So Ben came to us, actually certified as a firefighter and a paramedic. So he had all his certifications when he came to us. And came from Hudson, had a lot of experience from Hudson under Fire Department and as a paramedic on private ambulance company. So. We were happy to, to have him, and, and he's been doing a great job for us. So his fiancee Lauren and his kids are here to present him with his badge. Might want to move outside the podium. There's, they can get a good picture. Go with him. Okay, next, we have Mike Daco. Mike actually came to. Mike actually came to us from the recommendation of a retired captain from the Adrian Fire Department. He came to us, I believe, uh the first time since the nineteen eighties, he came to us uncertified as a firefighter. Usually, we hire firefighters and we've had to send them to paramedic class. But he came to us as a paramedic and wanted to go through the fire academy. So we were fortunate to to have him. He worked in Detroit for Detroit EMS for a couple of years before he came to us. So he had a lot of EMS experience, sent him to the fire academy, not knowing, because we hadn't done that long before I started here, but I believe second in your class, you finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, so by like less than a point, yeah. So second in his class, he finished and has been a great addition to our department also. So very excited to have him and his girlfriend Carrie is going to not stab him. Not as easy as it looks.
It's not, really.
All right, our pitcher?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you.
It's Madam Mayor. Uh I'm requesting that resolution, the consent agenda resolutions, twenty two, one oh eight, one oh nine, and one ten be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda with taking out one oh eight, one oh nine, and one ten?
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Hell. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to approve that consent agenda by but removing um resolution one oh eight, uh one oh nine, and one ten is approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda. Resolution R twenty two dash seventy seven is from Parks and Recreation. It is a resolution to approve a contract for tree services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments on this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments on this resolution? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution C R twenty two dash one zero eight is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Darcy Gifford to the Downtown Development Authority. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move, support.
Are there any public comments about this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um I'd like to amend um actually all three of them, but we'll start with one oh eight because they're all the same. The header for the for the resolution says that we're approving an appointment. The body of the resolution says we're we're considering a reappointment. It's a minor issue, but I think it needs to be corrected.
I I have a question.
Mr. Roberts?
Um have we transitioned from Downtown Development Development Authority to Main Street slash Downtown Development Authority? Which one is like the official title?
I think we've been using both. We've been using uh Main Street Board slash Downtown Development Authority.
So which should we be appointing them to?
I would say it should read just like that, just like you said. And so maybe the maker of the motion could accept those two changes as friendly amendment or just to bend the motion to include those changes.
So who made the motion?
What do we do?
Commissioner Hell.
Oh.
Can you just amend that motion to it that it to change the resolution to say appoint, not reappoint, and that they will be on the Main Street slash Downtown Development Authority Board?
Uh so move. Support.
Yeah, Commissioner Strayer, do you still second that with the friendly amendments?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um so we have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted with the two amended with two changes to amend the agenda approved by an all yes vote.
The resolution, not the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion to uh amend the resolution to make the two included changes as approved by an all yes vote. Sorry. There you go.
All right. Resolution C R twenty two dash one zero nine is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Tara Kumadoris to the Downtown Development Authority. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution with the change to include Main Street slash Downtown Development Authority.
And to change it to appoint.
And to change it, the body of it to change to appoint instead of reappoint.
Thank you.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gau. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution with the two amended changes are is approved by an all yes vote.
And our resolution C R twenty two dash one ten is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Josh Roth to the Downtown Development Authority. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution with the change of appointing Josh Roth to Main Street slash Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted with two included changes by an all yes vote.
Miss, are there miscellaneous reports in your packet? Are there any questions or comments on those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a question. Uh page thirty seven on the packet. Um I have a question about the wastewater department. I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'd like to get an answer sometime later. Um the cost of plant operation for the month of November, hundred and thirty two thousand four zero five, substantially higher than previous months and substantially higher than the same month last year. Just wondering why why it's so much more costly. Or why the why the uh.
I will ask our utilities director to provide you an answer to that question.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment, we will begin inside the chambers first. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. After we are done inside the chambers, I will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Harry Collins, eleven Scott Court, I am also one of County Commissioner, and I just wanna give you an update on the County Commission. For those who don't know, we will be having what's referred to as an organizational meeting January sixth at the uh Little County Commission Chambers. At the organizational meeting, there will be appointed a chairman and vice chairman of the board. Uh we do not know who will be. That will be decided at that meeting. And aware that there are two new commissioners, so there'll be a different makeup of the commission. That is not the regular board commissioners meeting. The regular board of commissioners meeting will be out the second Wednesday of the month. Thank you. I believe it's ten A M. The organizational meeting is ten A M.
My name is Carrie Clark. Uh we own Running With Ease at one forty six North Main Street. Um I am here in regards to the new trash disposal assessment that was imposed uh on all the downtown business owners. Uh the first we ever heard of this was on December seventeenth when we received a bill for four hundred and forty dollars. I went to City Hall thinking it must be a simple mistake, only to find out that it wasn't. It was a new assessment that was passed by the City Commission. In the twenty two years that we have been in our business downtown, we have never used the dumpsters, not once. Uh we have dumpster uh that we use elsewhere at a very low low cost. After talking with a few people, I have learned that the cost was decided by taking the amount of the projected cost and simply dividing it by the number of buildings in the designated area. How anyone thought that this was fair is is beyond me. My problem with this is you have buildings with multiple units consisting of apartments and businesses, and they are paying what a building with a single small business is paying. The multi-units are getting a steal of what the price. So of course, they are very happy. Downtown buildings should be billed on the same scale as residential buildings are for trash, which are per unit. The vast majority of buildings downtown have multiple units in them, and this would make the cost more fair and buildings with more units pay more accordingly. My other issue is that the assessment started on July first and runs for a full year. We never saw or heard anything about it until December seventeenth, five months later. Yet we are supposed to pay from July to December for months that we knew nothing about it or used it. At the very least, it should be prorated back for us because we did not get the bill. In closing, I just want to say that the lack of any communication to us as builders, building owners, is very disappointing. I reached out to each one of the commissioners, and Mary Roberts is the only one who acknowledged me. And and I do appreciate that, Mary. We, excuse me, we deserve better from the D D A and the City Commission. And I would hope that you, as a commission, can have the conversation and say perhaps we did not do justice in this situation, and we need to take a second look and make some small changes to make this assessment more fair to all of our downtown businesses. And more importantly, to those small businesses, because I will say again, one small business should not be paying the same as a building with three, four, or five more businesses or apartments. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment in. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to wait till everyone else was done. Let me start my time.
That's right. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, uh I'm Michelle Dewey. I work at the City of Adrian. Um I just wanted to make a quick comment and say thank you to the community that came out on Saturday for the food drive. Uh we had an overwhelming response that was fantastic. And I also wanted to say thank you to our Department of Public Works employees. Um they put in the majority of the work for that event, and it's very much appreciated.
At this time, we will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. You will see the time on the screen, and you also need to state your name and address, please. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
So yes, I'd like to address Carrie's uh email from Running With Ease. First of all, I heard you at the D D A meeting state that you had emailed all commissioners and that no one had replied to you, which is uh I perked up right away because I thought I never got an email from you. I didn't know, you know, why you would say that if, you know, maybe it, you know, went to Greg or Michelle, or it didn't get to me. Well, lo and behold, I found your email in my junk folder amongst twenty five other true junk emails. So first of all, um my fellow commissioners probably did receive their e your email in the junk folder, but did not know it was in there. So that's unfortunate. I apologize. Um I did reply and found it this weekend and took some time to think about my reply to you and, um you know, I would like to have further discussions with you on your concerns. So I don't know that that's anything that we can do as city commissioners, except every once in a while, check our junk folder. It's in your junk folder, too. Yeah, yeah, so that's it was the first time you emailed us. My guess is that's why it went in our junk folder. Um but that's, you know, that is what it is. So that's why we didn't get back to you in the time. Um my second I just wanna let you know I am collecting information. I've had a wonderful conversation with City of Toronto and City of Troy, Midland, um M M L. And other municipalities are thrilled that we are interested in doing something and using their their information. So I think that it will come together, but after discussing it with both Troy, Michigan, and Toledo, Ohio, it will not happen as soon as I would like for it to have happened, because there's a lot of things that need to go into it. So just to let you know, if you don't hear any, it's because we're probably looking at a launch more closer to the fall in September rather than the spring sometime.
Mr. Gau.
Um I'd like to reiterate the comments that that Michelle made earlier. Um first of all, she deserves a lot of recognition and thanks for the job that she did in organizing it, well, along with city staff. The workers out there that volunteered their time to to collect the the um the goods that are coming in and the monetary donations, which were fabulous. And the real thanks goes to the community. Um it amazes me the generosity that we have in our city. The people in our city are always willing to give regardless of, you know, you can look back at the associated charities, um fire and the outpouring of support there. It seems that when there's a need in our community, the community rallies and does great things for us. So I appreciate that. Appreciate Michelle, the city staff, and most of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Help?
I'll be quick. I'll be quick. So um here, I apologize. I did. I did see your email. It was in my junk folder. I apologize for that. I'm kinda giving you a little bit of history lesson about uh commercial trash usage. When the city went from the trash being on our taxes to direct billing, uh there was two reasons why that decision was made. One was um cash flow purposes, like so we have to have a certain amount of money in our solid waste funds to pay our vendor, you know, that was the first one. Um but the second reason was, and the main reason was, because businesses in the city as a whole would be taxed at the millage rate to pay for our trash service. But those businesses also would have dumpsters, like 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 my store in South Maine had had a dumpster. So essentially, that So essentially, that decision was made to change way before I bought the business, but essentially, if I did own it at the time, I'd be taxed twice for trash services. So well, when we when we made the decision to to go this route, because obviously costs have increased, so we made a point that to just spread it evenly. And I guess my position was knowing what I pay for dumpsters for both my my locations that at four hundred and forty dollars, that's a bargain, you know, you know, in the business sense, if you were to even buy the smallest dumpster, because I've had another entity downtown reach out to me with the same issue. And and then his his position was that he, you know, the dumpster, you know, that he already pays for dumpster. I go, I understand that, but how much do you pay a month? And then he told me how much you paid a month. I go, well, we're saving a couple hundred bucks a year, essentially. You know, that's why I told him. So that was kind of some of the reasons why we did that is because, again, so if if you know, and and again, you've got a great business, I support it with my my Brooks, you know, so I'm a bigger guy, you know, so but 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 the main reason that we did that is because all of our downtown businesses can't be exempt from other businesses in the city that have to have to have their own dumpster, whether it be if you use a lot of trash, which you have a smaller dumpster, or in my case, I have a bigger dumpster, but I I was supportive of it based on because of what it would cost if if businesses weren't downtown, or you didn't have, you know, residence units downtown, what you would have to pay for a dumpster, a single dumpster. It's actually you're, you know, it's a lot less. So that's a couple of the reasons, you know, the main reason was because of businesses getting double taxed is why they went to direct billing. And then the second would be cash flow. So that's kind of what my thinking was around that. But I'm I will respond to your email tonight and kind of give you more of a in-depth kind of of my position on that. But I understand that, you know, and and maybe somebody can answer this question for me like so before the trash contract was that was any downtown businesses billed for trash or was just?
They were. The problem was that they were billed sort of in a haphazard way, and there was no logic that we could discern. It wasn't done by anybody who currently works for the city. And so when we came to look at it, we went through different proposals, which we discussed with the commission, the idea of square footage, the idea of a usage rate, top of square footage, but what ended up happening is certain properties would come out with really anomalous results, like the church would get the highest tax bill in downtown, even though their use is not anywhere near that because of how large it is, right? And so we we really struggled with, well, what rate it would be fair? And and we just as exercise tried dividing it by every address downtown. And it came out to four hundred and forty dollars. And the rest of the analysis was, as you mentioned, that, well, that's just, you you couldn't even come close to getting a dumpster for that price. A dumpster would cost you two thousand dollars a year. So even though some properties had dumpsters, you know, we don't really want a multiplicity of dumpsters downtown. We want them all in the corrals that we've created for that purpose. And so we envisioned that those who had them, like the church, would get rid of them and use our dumpster service instead. And we baked an amount into the rate that's sufficient to add a few more dumpsters downtown to service that extra demand that we anticipate. But, you know, that was the analysis that went in. And like you said, we have to have a steady, secure income stream to pay the contractor. And so we had to have a predictable, regular rate. It can't be based on whether your building's vacant or whether it's occupied or what it's used for today. We have to know that X month, because the other thing that happened is that when we started looking at those kind of variable rates, well, what that means is, you know, if you come to me and you say, I don't want it, everybody else's rate goes up because the at the end of the day, the a certain amount of money must be collected every year to pay the trash contractor. And it it doesn't change based on how many are participating in it. It's based on how many dumpsters we have downtown. And so we felt like, you know, that rate was just a good deal for everybody.
I think the bigger picture is that is that since there's been some changes up here is that it was kind of done like the minister said, it's kind of done kind of half, you know what? So like now we're trying to be fair and balanced to everybody. But again, I I understand the concern. It's like, you know, getting that bill is a is a shock, but that was some of the thinking behind my position on it. So.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.